So before we begin, I just want to make sure that we add to the agenda after Section 4, before the executive session. Mark, how many minutes will you need?
Oh, 20.
Okay, so we'll add an additional 20 minutes for a conversation about?
Vermont's World Class Education Agenda. So it relates to the board policy.
Great.
Vermont's World Class?
Vermont's World Class Education Agenda.
Thank you.
I know, it's a lot there.
So we'll add that to Section 4 as the third bullet under that section. And we'll give Mark an additional 20 minutes for that conversation. So before we get to the agenda, are there any board acknowledgements or comments before we begin? David?
As I was walking down the hall in this building, I looked around and it came to mind that every time I walked down that hall, the floor is always shiny and it's very clean. I really appreciate the cleanliness of this area. I think people should be commended for it.
Excellent, thank you. Anything else before we begin?
I think I missed last time the opportunity to thank the Essex Town Little League for their...
But you can do it again.
God, since I got it at the very tail end, we might, I would just mention it again, the volunteer efforts that go into maintaining the field that they in turn get to use. Thank you. Oh, and friendships golf outing. So the school-based mentoring program that is happening in our district and now also through the Junction Schools and the Westwood Schools through CCSU will be hosting their second annual golf outing June 22nd at the Lynx. It is their fundraiser for the year. So bring your friends. And at the Essex Chips website, you'll find all the information you're looking for there.
It's June?
June 22nd. June 22nd.
I'm putting together a force if anybody wants to chase their balls with me.
It is a scramble, so that is the beauty of it.
So you need one ringer.
You need one.
I heard you think about that.
I'd love to play and be digging balls out of the weeds with you. I have a responsibility to get people to buy Mulligan's, so.
She did it very well.
That was my job last year. But it was a very fun outing last year. We'd like to increase attendance. We've had great participation with programs in our school and that is extended to now include the Junction and CCSU schools. As of January, they came on board. Community effort and really benefiting kids.
Excellent, thank you. I'd like to also just thank Kim for helping coordinate the review of flowers during the staff appreciation week. Very much appreciated. And also anyone who's able to attend, I mean, just a heads up and a thank you.
Huge thank you to the PTO, Rachel and all of her hats and all those who wore similar hats from the PTO. That is a monumental effort to pull off the week and especially the luncheon. And they do it beautifully and gracefully and I think people feel appreciated. So thank you to the PTO.
And Heather Cornell for being our coordinator this year. She put a lot of work into it, had a great time coming up with the Dr. Susti and all the pieces to that, so she did a lot.
Yes, my kids made little Lorax trees.
Exactly. Yes, the Lorax day and the green ice in here.
It was great. Well, thank you all. Unless there's something else, we'll move on. So consent agenda, do I have a motion? David moves. Rachel seconds. All is in favor? Aye. opposed, motion carries. Jumping into Board Policy and Monitoring Discussion, we have two monitoring reports tonight. We have Policy 4.2, Board Job Description. We also have 4.5, Board Member's Code of Conduct. I was responsible for 4.5 and I sent it around late.
And I sent 4.2 late?
Excellent.
Is that, I did print a few copies and then I changed them, so. Do you have, because I'm looking.
Are you looking for 4.2?
I'm looking for 4.2, yes. I have it right here. Oh, no, no. It should be open already. Oh, no, you know what? It's, I'm sorry, it's under, can you go under My Drive? It's the tab all the way to the right.
Sorry, I'm looking.
At the very top.
Just the very top, all the tabs at the very top.
Oh, sorry.
It's in one of those. Just keep going.
4.2?
It's shared with me.
Oh, click on Shared With Me on the left-hand's column. There you go.
Sorry, I'm looking.
Did you share it in my other journal or something?
Oh, not intentionally.
Okay.
Okay. Let me try and send it over.
No?
It might be that folks don't...
Why don't we do yours first when I will read it? Because everybody else does it, right?
I don't. I'm just seeing if I can pull it up.
So why don't we start with yours?
Okay.
I'll resend it because you're off the screen.
I'm logged in on my ETSD.
She's got it.
You got it?
This one there, any of them?
4.2.
Right there, 513.
No, 2013. There we go.
There you go.
Okay. All right, Kim, why don't you walk us through it?
Sure. So I had also done this last time, so for finding the voice to see, I don't know, Board Member's Code of Conduct. I'm sorry, I've got friend ones up. Give me just one second, I'll get mine. There we go. We are just a well-oiled machine. So it was the 4.2 and it's the policy on the outputs of the board and connecting with our owners. So in this, I didn't change our grades, if you will, from the previous year. I changed a little bit of the commentary. I feel that we are still in substantial compliance with linkage with ownership and the organization. I have put down in the bottom there a number of the occasions that we've reached out to Mr. Fisher from the Ma Agency of Ed in discussing educational jargon, standardized tests, Common Core. And I commented to the effect that we had, I think, good participation with school board members and administration and local legislators and thankfully the Essex reporter and less on the community member side of it. But we're very fortunate for our relationship with the reporter and the ability to expand our reach through, I'll say, and that became a story that I think had the opportunity to inform beyond the people sitting in that room. So still a worthwhile effort, but I think our deal is that we find a way to reach people where even in their busy schedules, what we're offering is valuable enough that we can have people face-to-face on our occasions. In February, we did a community safety meeting. We attended that which had been organized through Mark and others with the School Public Safety Committee. And that was a great exchange of information with our community and other local officials around the topic of community safety and school safety in that context. We did several opportunities through budget season, which we always do. Somewhat less actually sitting with the board tables, but I think partially due to schedule conflict and partially due to the reality that it didn't generate a tremendous amount of inquiry. I think it did, however, provide a visual awareness and anybody slowing to look at it when they came in for either the celebrational learning or pick-up or drop-off in the days leading up to the budget had a sort of a quick facts look. So I don't mind continuing to do those and I think being judicious about how we use them makes sense. And that, so that was another effort. We did lots of budget information meetings throughout the process, some of which had greater attendance than others. And we continue to have that annual meeting that is not very well-attended, but really very important. So I don't think we have a way of getting out of any of those things, nor should we. It's just figuring out if there are, I mean, without generating tremendous conflict, getting people to have this be part of a priority in an already busy schedule in the evenings. And so I think we continue to struggle with that. All of our efforts and I think it's something we'll maybe continue to look at and how we do that. We did an exit survey and we haven't really debriefed on that, but I think they did put it all together for us, but I just think we haven't addressed it. So that might be something that hits our table when we get to the work session this summer. And so that was sort of what I put kind of in the plan as we look at maybe moving that X from substantial compliance to compliance. And then on the policies, we have our policies and I think we did a good job in cleaning up this year some of those policies. We revised one of them to incorporate two others, but we didn't have them and deleted them. That was very efficient back. And then we adopted the golden policies or mandatory policies. And we're technically compliant with all of our policies. I think we have a regular schedule for our policy development policies and figuring out either where in each of those the mandatory policies fall so that there's a recording schedule for those. We're figuring out if there's a different schedule against maybe part of policy work that happens in our summer work. Just figuring that out because we have the schedule for the others. And I think sometimes those other policies may be evidence to the PG policies, but maybe we want to be specific about where those fall because then we know for sure they're falling in somewhere at some point during the year. And then we've had our ends policies for a long time, so one of the things we've spoken about is revisiting that maybe and engaging our community around that topic to make sure it's clear and reflecting the values of our community. So that was another one of those work on it things, I think. If that were to be the will of the board, that was one of those things we've discussed. We're in compliance on, I felt we were in compliance with the idea that we lacked the annual calendar and certainly noticed and plenty of good reason. We've had occasions where we've needed to alter it, but I felt that we were still fully in compliance on that. And then the union negotiations piece of it, we successfully negotiated. I think I was recalling it to your contract.
Yep.
And obviously, those are not easy things to do, but I think it was ultimately effective and negotiated in an atmosphere of respect. Evidence of Sussex reporter articles, other presentations with playboys, settled contracts, monitoring calendars and reports and minutes. I think I probably had written but not spoken to the articles that Mark and other board members had written for the reporter as part of our outreach. And I actually did not put it in there, but thought about it as I was driving here. Rachel, the meetings that you and Brandon and I had in your capacity as PTO president to figure out how to again try and reach our community members. I hadn't put that in there, so I don't know if you guys want me to do a friendly amendment and if I can put it in now or if that isn't considered among those things that...
I think it's worth noting, even though perhaps we didn't get as far as we wanted to, I think it was an effort that we made and probably want to try and continue.
We started it and even closed the loop on it and that's...
Yeah, and I think that one of the things that we're, you know, as a board, I think that we've got a lot of work to do is in figuring out that community engagement piece. And I still believe that there is some partnership opportunity with the PTO on some aspects of community engagement. You know, we're two sort of similar organizations that are trying to engage the public. Maybe your PTO focus might be a little narrow just in the parent community. But I think it would still make sense for us to, I mean, every year that I've been on this board, this is something we've struggled with. Attending the VSBA conference last year and sitting with a lot of board chairs, it was one of the common struggles that many boards wrestle with is how do we get people to engage with us and how do we engage with people around these big issues that we try to tackle? So I think that's, you know, I don't think we'll ever sort of nail it, but we need to get better at it. Especially as we have to start thinking about, I think, circling back and checking to see if the ends policy is still resonating with the community and with the parents and other groups within the community. Any other thoughts or comments on the monitoring report?
Very mild little pieces. I would have given us a little better, I would have said in compliance on the linkage one because we have done a lot of stuff. Have we been very super successful at it? Could we do better? I guess we could and that's why, I'm not saying, oh, yes, we should make it compliance. I'm totally fine with substantial compliance.
I'm sorry, I sort of listed all the stuff we did, but I do, I would not, I would be concerned that if we were in compliance at the end, that we don't continue to focus as strongly on. And I think in being in substantial compliance, it acknowledges the efforts, but really all these policies and everything we do is about outcomes. And so since we're still short on the outcomes, my preference is to keep us in substantial compliance because that's the standard we hold Mark to. And so it felt more honest.
I can certainly go for that.
I was just looking at, again, different avenues, you know, such as the simple, like the USX reporter allows us to branch out into the community more, you know, looking at other ways to use written word, I mean, such as, you know, more frequent communication that's written versus we know that trying to draw people out in the evening is a challenging battle. And do we start looking at other places and other directions? Can it be through written word? Can it be at senior meals, things, different community events where even if it was a very short kind of intro, "For more information, I'm over here," that might just engage people in a different way.
So I wanted to leave this as ideally a piece of our summary where we, in a retreat, have a little more time to read it out. And my recommendation would be is that we would come out of it with an action plan because I think we have, we've begun the process in a few different ways. And I think the part that ended up being shelved for other priorities, conflicting priorities is, all right, how are we going to do this? What are we going to do? Who's in charge of what? And let's do it. And so, and not to blame anybody, I just think it is the nature of sort of what happens when we really want to generate great ideas and then we get distracted in a very reasonable way, meaning there's something else that's hit the priority list that needs attention more immediately. And so we continue to do our best and it continues not to quite necessarily get the information we need to know now. Now that being said, I mean, we're even in silence able to have passed our budget with a substantial margin in a year where our increase was larger than it has been in years. And I'm hoping that speaks in some ways to the support through the other avenues of people about information. And so some part of what we're doing or have been doing over the budget process has been, I hope, effective. And I think that's a reasonable interpretation of the results. Even in the low turnout, the margin was substantial. And I think there were a lot of articles that spoke to the budget over the process in multiple meetings, even if only him, people came out, handful of people came in. And so we're seeing some success, but I think there may be, we're not there. I don't think in outcomes.
No, I think you're right. And one of the things I would advocate as we begin thinking about retreat and topics for the retreat and outcomes for the retreat is, I think action planning is good. I would encourage us to action plan around one or two specific things that we want to accomplish because I think that one of the dangers is that we can put together a really comprehensive and extensive action plan. And to me, that's almost more daunting than maybe saying, okay, in the fall, we're going to do this. And in the spring, we're going to do this. You know, to just make it more, and still put, you know, just as much energy and attention to that thing, whatever it might be. But I think sometimes, you know, that would be better than having a comprehensive plan that we never end up...
I think at times that we beat ourselves up too much, thinking we should do more with linkage with the owners and community. The only time that we really seem to have a lot of action from the ownership is when there is controversy. And the fact that, use for example, tonight, we had one administrator, one resident from another community in our audience. I think that that shows a certain amount of satisfaction coupled with the fact that the budget was successful. I think that we should continue what we have been doing and adjust accordingly if there are controversial items that come up and analyzed at that time what should be done. That's all of my thoughts.
Reminds probably in not acknowledging our ITM was one of our enemies as well. Very seriously, we're very fortunate for that. We will occasionally have people comment about having seen it. And I thought, goodness, people are watching. Really? People are watching? But in fact, I think people do and there are people who can't get out who make that a prime time viewing for them.
Can we go on and watch yourself? It's kind of irritating.
No, I have not. I figure we spend lots of hours here.
So I've heard a couple of friendly amendments. The PTO connection, maybe mentioning our ITM as well as another sort of...
As an evidence, perhaps?
Yep. So unless there are objections?
I actually also comment about number three. Just an interpretation, assurance of successful organizational performance on end executive limitations. Do we read that as we're monitoring them, therefore we're in compliance? Or we've actually succeeded at all of our ends executive limitations?
I took it to mean that we're monitoring them because that was the part that we can be in charge of. But I also, as I read it, paused. I was really guided by what, how we had interpreted it last time, but I would be open to a different interpretation because I had the same pause. I thought this policy being about the part that is ours seemed as though we are in fact monitoring and asking for action plans or plans for non-compliance, monitoring documents. So if we were just saying, Mark's saying not in compliance and we weren't asking him to provide, you know, what is his expectation for coming into compliance, then I would feel we wouldn't be monitoring for compliance is how I interpreted it. But I'm open if you guys feel differently.
Yeah, this is the part I had, like, are we monitoring what we're doing or are we monitoring? And my thought is to agree with you that this should be about us monitoring us because there is, there is a policy that you can bring to us that actually monitors the actual end goal.
That was how I took it. And again, I would feel differently if we were not asking Mark to follow up any non-compliant component of any of the monitoring efforts with his, you know, plan for how he intends to come into compliance. And I think he's done that and we've asked for that and he's done that.
Any feedback or questions? And with the friendly amendments, I'll call the last Astro Motion on this monitoring report.
I will. Set monitoring report 4.2 as friendly amendment.
Yeah, sometimes it's done.
Oh, David jumped in and seconded.
I couldn't hear it, sorry.
Got it? Do you have it now?
No, I couldn't hear it.
Sorry.
Dan, you said what?
Move that we approve the monitoring report 4.2 as amended.
Thank you.
And I actually already amended it.
Thank you.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Not sure. Motion carries. Looking at 4.5, I put together a monitoring report on board member code of conduct. I believe Dan did this last year.
Yes.
So this is the one that deals primarily with issues of conflict of interest, how board members conduct themselves in terms of board business versus personal interest versus professional interest. And so I found us to be in substantial compliance, but there were two things that I did mark down as two specific items within the policy that I marked in substantial compliance and probably could have also leaned to impartial compliance. Primarily, so if we look at, sorry, if we look at 4.1 and the...
Thank you.
...that I provided there.
4.5.1?
Yeah, so, sorry, 4.5.1. So primarily, one of the things that I think we all recognize is that we all come to this table wearing many hats, you know, whether it's parent, taxpayer, spouse of an employee, parent of multiple children. So it's, sometimes it's difficult, and also board member, right? So when we come to this table, we are supposed to be wearing our board member hat. And that can be challenging as we wrestle with issues that cross into all those other areas and may cross over into other areas and other roles that we have in the community or in the district even. So this, I think that we have been challenged at times this year in particular with issues that have come up that have challenged which hat am I wearing at this moment? So I put down that this is impartial compliance or in substantial compliance only to sort of remind us all that when we come to this table, the hat we need to be wearing is the board hat. For 4.5.2, I said, I also said that we were in substantial compliance because I could think of two instances where conflict of interest came up as an issue for us during the course of the year. One was as we were getting ready to go into negotiations, there was a concern on the negotiations team representing the board as to whether or not it was a conflict of interest to be negotiating with the teacher of one of your children representing the teachers' association. We checked, we checked in, we had a conversation about that and it turned out to be okay on both sides in the end. But that was an issue where I think we were good to say, whoa, you know, does this cross the line in terms of conflict of interest? I think also there was an instance this year where because of the employment of a board member's spouse in the district, it brought up some questions about discussions about particular issues and whether or not a board member should recuse themselves from certain discussions. So this isn't an effort to rehash all of those conversations or rehash those issues, but I think it's an opportunity for us as a board to say, we all are responsible for sort of maintaining clarity around what could be a conflict of interest. And if somebody feels that an issue is coming up that's presenting a conflict, it needs to be discussed openly among the members of the board. So what I did is I actually added some suggestive action at the end of this monitoring report because I felt, I feel like this is an area that we all could work on. So I have two suggestions and we can do one or the other or both. The first would be to actually either during a retreat or during a working session of the board, talk about conflict of interest. Talk about this particular monitoring report in detail and walk through some scenarios and just have that open conversation about what a conflict of interest is and whose responsibility it is to say, I think there's a conflict of interest here. And just walk through, have that conversation. I think that could be helpful in and of itself. The other thing we could also do is I know that VSBA offers seminars and possibly webinars about how to deal with conflict of interest as a board. And that could be also helpful to have that professional third party come in and sort of walk... sort of walk us through the steps of this particular issue, which can be difficult for board members, especially board members in small communities that again have multiple roles, whether it be parent, grandparent, board member, or spouse of an employee. So the evidence, I think, is pretty self-evident. I did add feedback from the superintendent. That was not on the previous version of this report, but I felt that that's also an area where I know Mark has occasionally given us or given me, me or us, feedback about, you know, maybe you want to think about this. So I think that's an important voice that we need to hear whenever issues of this type arise. So that's my overview of the monitoring report. I know you didn't have a ton of time to read it before this meeting, but I'd certainly welcome any thoughts or feedback.
I consider you to be quite thorough.
Thank you, sir.
I'm ready to make a motion on it if there's no other discussion.
How do you feel about the suggested actions, David? Do you feel like either one of those would be helpful for us as a board?
I think this ties in with my suggestion from the prior meeting when we talked about board member orientation and refresher course for the old timers that it could be a part of orientation.
Oh, that's a good idea, yeah. It's part of a broader refresher course.
Yes, that's correct.
Any other thoughts or comments?
I think that seems like a good avenue for it.
Any other general comments or questions about the monitoring report? Okay. I think, so is there a motion?
Motion to accept the monitoring report as presented.
Is there a second?
I second.
That was quick, wasn't it?
All is in favor? Aye. Contrary, motion carries. Five zero.
It was a board member's statement.
Yeah.
Great. Let's get back to my agenda review. Can you bring the agenda back up? Oh, can you bring the agenda back up?
Maybe.
So seven thirty-four, we're a little bit over on our time. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Mark. We are going to be talking about two monitoring reports tonight. Two point one, treatment of students and parents and guardians, and also two point two, treatment of staffs. So, and also the agenda item that we had with the meeting.
Yes, thanks, Mr. President.
So Mark, take it away.
Thanks. And please ritualize a new person for the process, just ask lots of questions if you have any. So let's, let's start with, and I'm sure you do. What I've, what I've observed over the last, you know, three years is a very friendly group. So let's start with two point one, treatment of students, parents, and guardians. And the overarching expectation obviously is to, in respect to the interactions of those groups, that superintendent shall not cause or allow conditions, procedures, or decisions that are untimely, unclear, undignified, or unnecessarily intrusive. And you can see in each category what my interpretation is, which are the things that the bull's under, you know, beneath that. So in keeping with what we started this, I started this year, it highlighted in yellow are those changes. Some are very minor, some have some significance. I'd like to walk the board through my thinking on that and find the domain. And starting with page one, you're all with me?
Yes.
I just added the word educational. If it's, free and reduced lunch information is to ensure nutritional and educational outcomes for students. So it made sense to have the word educational planted there. Everything else that's not in yellow remains the same from the required requirement. The next piece has to do making sure that in the course of professional service and less disclosure serves a compelling professional purpose as far as required by law, and that the information must be secured in ways that are inaccessible to authorized personnel. Basically, then we've got a system in place that's been able to, you know, provide and disclose information that is privileged. So this year, we added an online service for registration. It was implemented to provide a greater ease with the process, and there wasn't duplication across the schoolhouse. We've got great, you know, a lot of time and energy went into training staff, their orientation around what that student system, that information system looked like, and its execution, we thought, went pretty well. It was, it was a little touch and go. At first, there was some bumps, there were some bumps in the road because it was all new, some people who seamlessly transitioned, others who needed more assistance. So I think, I think now that we are in May of, of the school year, I believe that we've got, we're feeling pretty good about the system as designed and as it's running.
When you say people needing assistance, do you mean parents or teachers or both?
There was a little bit of an emotional rescue need there because of the amount of stuff being so different. There, there were computer technology glitches as we were learning, sort of, even though we front-loaded the process with a lot of training for staff, there were some things that we didn't have it all together when we began. But we had a great help desk, I believe, Ellen from our vendor, and I think that we provided great assistance if parents were requested.
Could you give, could you just recede that from here?
I think it was anecdotal, incidental. We didn't do anything more than that. But the good thing is I haven't heard any, any concerns for many months, so I always take that as a good sign.
Until, until the beginning of next year.
Round two will be telling.
It's actually in process now with the kindergarten registration.
Oh, yeah, it's doing good.
So it's going.
And it's very, and again, the purpose of this, this policy is to keep information secure. And there's some risk when you've got multiple documents that go in perspective of the Volkswagen van to the next school, here's the box of student records. So having it in a digital format just really, I think, ensures that confidentiality. So even though there were some inconveniences, I think it's really is in keeping with the spirit of this particular subsection of the policy. The next piece has to do with making sure we make it accessible for all kids, parents, and guardians regardless of their handicap and condition, and that when accessibility and privacy concerns surface, the district shall take steps to address those problems. And again, you can see what I've added to what we had, had last year. I've taken some things off last year because I called them new, and now they're part of the system. But to reassign the duties of the district maintenance technician to formally monitor repair when needed, all safety features in each of our schools. I felt that that was germane to this part of the policy, so it's not only fixing bathroom stalls, but also making sure that we've got the physical accommodations in place for, for all kids and all staff. And having Neil McIntosh now sort of appointed to that position, I think, better guarantees that that monitoring would happen more consistently and with a finer eye towards the detail.
The daily maintenance stuff came under the purview of each of the building administrators. So that is different than this, where this is the maintenance technician, the district maintenance technician having sort of a scheduling where she's checking elevators and things like that.
Yes.
Otherwise, the day-to-day staff is pretty good.
Every school has their own little punch list. But as it relates to safety, it just felt like it was a good place to put it.
As far as, as far as handicap access and things like that, are there, is there some outside source that monitors that, some outside standard that looks at that, that comes in and audits us, or is there?
Does that happen randomly? Department of Labor, not since I've been here, but I guess they can have a random visit. Certainly, our fire, our very diligent fire department have come in before and have looked at code issues and whether or not we're in compliance. But in terms of a regular schedule, no, we've got, you know, American Disabilities Act, you know, really drives our thinking around the handicap condition piece of it. And those punch lists include those things required of federal law.
Who would check on that? I was curious. Is there someone who periodically comes around from the state, from the feds?
Department of Fire, Labor, and Industry, I think it's those guys. And once you get on their list of people to visit, and if they find you're out of compliance, they might come back next year. But again, I haven't seen that level of monitors inside.
I wonder if insurance people have an interest in making sure we're compliant as well. I would presume many of us are occasionally...
I invited a fellow from, from Visvit up here last fall who was in charge of all, followed Tim Petrovich, he used to work there, wanted him to conduct sort of audit of our buildings. So we walked around with Director of Business and Finance, Neil McIntosh, our head guys, and the building principals, and I attended one of those sessions just to go through the building and look at all the things we need to be paying attention to, from screws that are loose on the slides, outside to, you know, things that are in front of radiators. And he felt we just do an outstanding job here. And it's very anecdotal, but there wasn't anything concerning in his mind that we should be paying attention to.
It was such a safety maintenance point.
Yeah, and cleanliness and all those things.
So Mark, this, this review, it extends to the playgrounds as well?
Yeah. And what we're doing, we'll have, I won't get into it tonight, but, you know, we're moving towards a, Neil's position, you know, a district management position, not as an administrator, but someone who can support the good work of our building grounds head and people. These are big buildings, and they sometimes don't get as much feedback as they need in terms of all the things you need to think about, from everything from the simple things like cobwebs in the corner to playground safety equipment. So Neil's role as an emerging one is there is important, good decision-making and monitoring of those things that need to be placed in the building. And I felt it was, in addition to what the principals do, I think Neil is going to play an emerging role there.
In history, the superintendent and each building principal, as a team of four, would walk around the district, go through buildings, look at building safety, accommodations, whatever was involved. Is that still done, realizing names have changed and positions have changed?
It doesn't to that degree. It happens again with Neil McIntosh as our maintenance technician, and Roger will accompany him when there's a special thing to be considered, but it really isn't coming upon the principal, Neil and the head guy to do that in their office. We don't do a building.
Neil would be the level and field for a possible building?
Yeah, he is. So moving on, I'm on the bottom of page two, I'm going to flip past page three. Kim mentioned the importance to, you know, start thinking about as a board and as a superintendent, you know, what, 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 how do I monitor the mandated policies? So I, this is the first time you, this, the board has seen this, and I've included mandated stated policies in this monitoring report. This has to do with making sure I don't fail to establish a clear understanding of what's to be expected and what may not be expected from services that are offered throughout the district. And I felt that the policies mentioned here are policies that we need to have in place, which they are, that I think are aligned with this expectation. So in yellow, everything is classified guidelines to participation of homeschool students in the educational program. Those are stated policies that we have in place that I monitor through procedures at the building level to make sure that those, those are communicated to parents, guardians, and parents. So it seemed like the perfect sort of place to put that for this, this year. Additionally, just going through the evidence section, individual parents and guardians are supported one-on-one by district personnel, should they not be able to access electronic surveys whenever requested? I'm concerned that they may not always request that, so I think that we have to have a stronger procedure in place that identifies more accurately who those parents are and making sure that we're reaching out to them rather than taking them to reach out to us.
Well, because, for example, the different surveys you've sent out, you've sent them out electronically, are those provided paper copy to the teachers to provide out to those parents that they know want either have, you know, different family situations where they need it or always get the handwritten of the building like that?
It's a moving target because that family landscape changes a lot. But what we start out with a year, we have them identify whether or not they don't have means to access electronically, and then a list is, a list is generated. What I have to look into more closely is whether or not that list is maintained, and, you know, when mom and dads, guardians separate, or people move, you know, that, I think that that's a moving target that we need to get tighter on. But it's, it's challenging to list. And it's a very, very small percentage of our moms and dads and guardians who actually don't have access.
Well, then, well, actually, on that subject, and this is actually in the book, is I know with the updating of emails, because you mentioned different situations, people are constantly updating their emails, or any effort made to constantly update that list. So when you start getting these, oh, this is no longer valid, is there somebody who tries to locate that parent to get the new information?
I believe that our registrars in the, in the, at the building level, which we have one of, are in correspondence with Kim Gayward, who's our student information management data person.
Weekly.
Weekly. So that updating is happening, so, but again, I just, to be honest, it's a moving target.
The cleanest list you've ever seen.
Yeah, I was going to say, very cumbersome.
My office is next to Kim's, and she starts her day with those types of conversations. So because, as you identified in your board report, that, you know, people are not as accessible to have meetings, you know, we are in a digital world, and we just have to be really vigilant in making sure those are updated. And when we see a pattern of non-engagement, we've got to reach out and get those parents and moms. So I just, I thought that was important to mention. The next piece of evidence, and I thought it was appropriate, is that the district leadership team meets weekly to just, to address district work related to street teacher plan in particular. Attention is directed weekly to the importance of honing a district message and relaying that message to building personnel to ensure, you know, timeliness, consistency, and accuracy. And one of my growing concern that I've had over the last, well over a year or so since the strategic plan came to fruition, and I've heard a little bit about this for me in the past, what we agreed to in terms of what the message should be as it goes out to the field and is communicated through the principal's office or through individual classrooms, professionals working in the building, the message sounds different for the consumer, namely, parents, namely, children. And that creates stress in the system. And I'm going to talk a little bit about that in terms of the survey that I administered. So I thought it was appropriate to point out that although we work very hard in trying to hone that message, I think some of the things that we get tangled up in have to do with that message sounding different by the time it reaches the intended audience. And so as a leadership team, one of the things that we're committed to is focusing on fewer things rather than lots of things. And just, you know, checking our assumptions over and over, Ellen and I in particular have talked about how do we, as district leaders, spend, have an opportunity to spend more time in the buildings to have direct conversations with teacher colleagues in particular, so that the message is coming from, from me as a superintendent, rather than expecting second or third hand that that's going to be a spot-on message. So some of the experiences I've had this year with miscommunication, I own, but I really believe part of it is, is what it looked like by the time it got to the, to the audience. So I thought it's appropriate to point out, I don't have an action plan to talk to you tonight about, but in essence, in every agenda we have, once we meet, we meet on Thursdays with two hours at the end, is what's the district message? Every week, religiously, we talk about the actionable items and how do we get them to people, so it's not, it's not inconsistent, untimely, or confusing. So that's a, that's a body of work. It's one thing to be communicated in your building. Usually, that's pretty typical. When you try to take district targets, now apply it to pre-K eight with 125 educators, it's a bigger challenge with that message. So keep on, keep on moving. Ellen, did you want to say something?
I'm going to wait.
Okay. Additional evidence in 2012, 2013. We've retooled our websites, our webpages for four district administrators. We have, newer information has been provided to prospective preschool parents vis a vis Act sixty-two. I believe that that's a lot more clear than it has been over the last couple of years. Superintendents kept parents and guardians apprised of school safety matters as it relates to district needs through Alert Now and the Community Safety Forum. I've initiated a monthly roundtable discussion with parents to encourage parents and guardians to discuss educational issues that they're interested in. We've also sponsored two parent events this year, one having to do with strategic planning, and also one this past month or so regarding common course state standards. Going on to page four. Two surveys were conducted this year, one on the celebration of learning that went on, out on the day after, and recently, over the last couple of weeks, which I'm pretty sure I gave you a copy of, were the district results of the parent climate survey, which I'll talk about later in the, in the moment. So again, am I in compliance? Only when we're measuring whether or not what we're doing is working. And again, it's a challenge when you use surveys because it's not typical that more than 15% of the people respond. And so, and I know that 15% of the folks who respond to surveys don't necessarily reflect, you know, the 100% of people who are, who are parent. So surveys are a tool that we can use, but we've got to be thoughtful in terms of how we use those, those results. We've also created, it would be launched this, this summer. I've gotten some feedback that our, our website has not always provided the type of information that parents are looking for and community members... that our website has not always provided the type of information that parents are looking for and community members. And so an ad hoc committee will be formed based on some good feedback that I received. Timely and good feedback. And Ellen will facilitate that process, starting with school lets out. And I, we've already got some good ideas in terms of how we improve its utility and friendliness and sort of.
Can I just one suggestion, just broke there?
Sure.
Search bar.
So anyway, yeah.
That's all I'll say.
What's fun about the conversation, there's lots of suggestions and, but we take it very seriously. And the feedback I received was very helpful and I look forward to hearing more about that. So that's important, again, as it relates to this policy. And then finally, I've created a little friendly student survey for grades four through seven. Again, in keeping with making sure we have student voice and student feedback and whether the practices, procedures we have in place and meeting their needs are meeting them. So I think students in grades four through seven will appreciate that we're trying to ring and give us some feedback. Again, that will be used for reforming our thinking in the future.
Why are you?
Because I was thinking seventh, fourth grade, I think my experience is that they really start to understand the concept of surveys or so even the third grader student. In seventh grade, I believe it gives us a chance to then affect change at the eighth grade level. To me, eighth grade is, we have a survey for eighth graders that we use as part of 1.2, 1.4. And I also don't want to survey kids to death. But when we get survey results back this spring, we'll then inform our thinking about what grade it needs based on that.
It would just seem to me, you know, lightning to, I don't know if the survey is aligned in that you're gathering some of the data because if you ask eighth graders to think about what they think when you go into ninth grade and what they feel like they're doing or not, and that would seem to be pretty valuable information and it would be a bummer to lose that insight for those who might take it seriously and reflect on their experience. I'm sure plenty of eighth graders may or may not, and I don't want to cast those vermin when kids get done by the end of eighth grade.
Well, some of the questions we survey eighth graders do relate to those, and I haven't vetted this for the leadership team yet, but some of the questions do, are germane to the questions we already asked them, we already surveyed them. And then we bring back ninth graders who also address some of that, so that's my way at that. But I think it's time that we institutionalize a survey for students to give us some good feedback at the end of the year on their learning experience.
And something that I have every year?
Yeah.
That's the expectation.
And then finally, fail to inform students and parent guardians on ways to be heard for persons who believe they have not been accorded reasonable interpretation of their protections under the policy. And again, the evidence is that this policy and all supporting documents are posted on the website or in paper format available in district contribution. I received earlier, I heard feedback also from a parent about parents not being able to access the policies under the website, hence we need to do some work around that. Through principal supervision, the superintendent expects principals to be accessible to all parents and guardians during parent-friendly times to discuss matters of concerns. Next year, although not stated here, I'll expect parents to have a monthly meeting with parents similar to what I'm doing as a superintendent.
Are the principals have the level?
What did I say?
Parents have monthly meetings.
Well, they already do that.
And that's actually something that I've heard. People would enjoy having that opportunity.
Good, well, they're gonna have that opportunity, so.
Not that they don't want to see you, but they, some things they think aren't maybe not.
So I think it's important, it's high time. I, I believe we are making a shift. And I think it started with a parent involvement policy that then transcended some of the internal procedures we had at the building around, what are we doing to engage mom and dad and guardians in this conversation about student learning? And I think as more and more parents get involved and more comfortable giving us feedback through surveys or phone calls, which they are, that's anecdotal, but they are, I think it's bringing up a much richer conversation about what does learning mean here in Essex Town? And parents, I think voices need to be included. So that is my expectation, that the new principal founders, Kevin Briggs and Peter Farrell, will host monthly roundtable types of discussion. Again, sort of might be topically, you know, it might be a topical issue or it might just be open mic. And I met with one principal just two days ago who sort of went out and had, did that on his own. He says it's one of the more invigorating conversations he's had all year because it was just the conversation and good ideas came out of that. So in addition to my continued work around engaging parents, I'm expecting principals to do that as well.
How many, how many parents actually are you engaging in that roundtable forum?
I've had the privilege of meeting with one parent, one-on-one, one evening, and the last two, they've been four to six.
How well? As a session?
Yeah.
Well communicated, do you feel that, how well, if you, say again, if you surveyed all the parents, I said, did you know that we have an opportunity once a month to meet with Mark?
I don't know, Dan. I mean, I've put out a couple of letters, it's gone, it's always announced in the PTO newsletter, it's on the news on our website, which is accessible to us right there.
You know, we, we.
I don't, I don't know what the answer is, but.
We just see feedback, the more people ask those sorts of things, even to the point of almost spamming, the more that, more likely people are to see it because it's not right there.
You might, I just, a final suggestion, you might, next year, it might be redundant for you to have separate roundtables from the principals? Perhaps you could join with the principals?
At times, if it were topical, I might do that, yeah.
It might be good for you to hear, because that, those conversations might be different than conversations that people might want to have with you? It might be a good window for you.
I think where it might, where it might go is that my sessions might be more topical in nature by random, by surveying what moms and dads and guardians want to talk about, then Ellen and I, Lora's can put together some presentations. But I also like, and I really value the opportunity to sit down and chat too. But what inevitably happens is that it migrates to building level things. So it's really important that principals have that opportunity to have that face-to-face.
Do you, in the absence of that, then, have a feedback loop for you where principals are providing you some feedback that you might have otherwise had in your roundtables? And thinking process, for your sake, since you went from superintendent roundtables to principal roundtables to have that accountability loop, share with you the information.
Yeah, here's how we're gonna do that, Kim. I'm just gonna circle back to the survey just very quickly because I didn't want to take time to do that tonight.
Can I, I did have questions on one of the bullets up here, so I didn't know if we want to come back to it after, but the four, I mean, the four where we listed all those policies, but tell me if you'd rather come back to it after the survey.
Can we, let me, I'll do a survey quickly.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
So I gave you a hard copy of the district results and I hope you've had a chance to look at those. What you haven't seen, because it just wasn't ready for primetime where every build, all buildings were disaggregated. And my purpose for this was not to, I got some feedback that I wish we could have commented. Because comments, sometimes it's helpful for people just to say, this is what I think. I'm sometimes challenged by comments because there's no context and I don't know where it's coming from. So I've not always found comments to be instructive. But really, that's not the reason. If I design there no comments, because now it's going to be incumbent upon principals through my supervision that they hold roundtable discussions around some of the areas that they should be concerned about. One of the things that parents, and there were 212 responses, so again, that's a, that's about 20% of our parents or thereabouts.
30%, right?
Not bad, not bad, yeah. Less than 60% of them said that they clearly understand our curriculum standards. That says something to me. So less, you know, six parents out of 10 aren't really clear. About the same number have, you know, we're not sure about how students are graded or rated or scored or I don't understand like where the standard is and how, so do we have to pay attention to that? Absolutely. 50% of our families said that, that they're concerned about the emotional safety of their children while in school. Again, these are district data.
Sure.
Okay, now, under the hood, our, our school-based data, you can probably imagine that there's more emotional concerns at the middle school than there might be at the elementary school, but it lives everywhere. So my expectation is to take those numbers, is to celebrate those areas that we're doing really well. Like David, our buildings are really well, very clean and well-maintained. But those areas that are starting to drop under 70%, I think we have to unpack that, principals lead in that conversation. And not just admiring the data, but to say, well, what are we gonna do about it? As parents and as administrators and educators in the building and superintendents, about how to affect those numbers so that they, they start declining. So my intention was to, was sort of a dipstick, you know, pull it out, here's where it is. And now to take next year to form some, put some work in.
Mark, there's a question?
Pardon me.
Sorry.
Sorry. So my question, Mark, is, oh, great. My question is, one of the things that I would like for us to, to, as a group, get a little bit better at is, while at the same time highlighting areas of concern, also, as you said, celebrating the areas where we're shining. Because one of the things that I, that I think we sort of have developed over time is a tendency to go to the negative. And so I'm not, I'm not advocating for taking a Pollyanna view. But for example, when we broke down some of our presentations around the budget, maybe last year more than this year, we sort of zeroed in on the areas where we're not quite meeting, you know, we're not quite up to our own expectations or standards. But still, the overall story of our district is incredibly positive. And I think that sometimes, I think we, we might over-accentuate the negative to the detriment of the positive. You know, I, I think that for some parents anyway, there is a concern that, you know, maybe we're not academically up to snuff. Maybe we're not, you know, doing a great job. And the thing is, is that we are. And what we're focused on when we come together for these meetings is to focus on how to get even better. But what I'd like for us to do is to think very consciously about the fact that we know that, we accept that, that, you know, we know that the indicators are really positive and that we're focusing on our areas where we know improvement can be achieved. But not everybody's in that same loop. And so sometimes the only message that people hear because of some of the focus that we have is, things are not going well. So anytime we present this kind of a data or talk about things like student performance, I would hope that we could start to sort of say, the picture is really good, and here's the picture. And now we're gonna talk about the things where we want to make it better.
Well, I appreciate that, that comment. I mean, I, Kim said we're the highest standards of people superintendent compliance, we should be as well. I kind of like that substantial compliance thing. I'm never gonna be, I mean, let's face it, I mean, you, it's really difficult work and I sweat the stuff all the time. And how do you get to great? You get to great by continuing to look at your assets, but also you sort of perseverate on the things that are still scoring low. And teachers are no different. They look at the kids who are underachieving every day and it just, that's your focus. But I appreciate that assets orientation.
Yeah, it's something that's been, I haven't.
So I wanted to just come back to the survey, not just leave you hanging, what's it gonna do with it? Because there is a plan to address that. How often I use the survey, I'm not certain. I, you know, I also want to be sensitive to surveying people to death. So we've got to be strategic when we go out as a district team to where, what are parents and guardians and kids and teachers thinking? We've got to be thoughtful of how often we use this tool.
I, I would think also, I realize that when you're looking for data and you're trying to graph out data and have numbers, those nice little comment lines at the bottom are challenging to put in there. But I would also think that, that, you know, one of our goals being trying to get substantial feedback. Like, I'm just thinking of our survey of the voters. You know, okay, there's all these great numbers and that paints a picture, but for those comment lines at the bottom, I think that, that's what changes it from black and white to color.
One of the things, one of the, one of the ways that I think comments can be helpful is not the individual comment, but the themes that emerge. So when we do, I mean, we do a lot of different kinds of surveys, and so we don't necessarily, I mean, we look at the individual comments, but we also look for those key words, you know, what, what are the continuing sentiments that we're, that we're hearing through all these comments? And we can, it's very easy to sort of identify, okay, these are the themes that we're hearing, and then what does that mean?
Celebration of learning comments were a great example. Within the first third of the page, we saw what the themes were.
Right, right.
But you're, you know, that's, the comments are helpful, but again, not to, because there's things that are said that are not kind and sometimes not flattering and those are, you know, what we talk about is we take out the highs and we take out the lows and we look at what's in the middle. That's typically a strategy. So anyway, Kim.
Can you disaggregate in the data of building based, is that something that's been back tested? Is that what you decide to do out of this after the summer, is that something that's been back tested?
Absolutely.
Just in that, sometimes because we get information, anecdotes and people coming at us, it's helpful to have a sense of what is, even at 20% participation, which is fairly substantial, you know, what is really the sentiment other than the person who would choose or is gracious or away?
And I owe it to parents as well, as we do with celebration of learning. There was a brief sort of, we're gonna do it like this, I mean, so I took a survey and where, where's that information going? So I owe it to parents as well.
And I think I would echo Dan's comment regarding the comment piece. And I would also add that, while I didn't feel, as though I didn't have a voice by not having a comment section, I appreciated and maybe those who are willing to participate in surveys would feel the same in being asked. So even if people, I don't know that I'd worry so much about surveying people to death. We don't have another great avenue for gathering data from people. And to know that our district is concerned and asking, for me as a parent, is valuable. And so I'm not, I'm sure that there's a balance to that, but I think it's hard, if you don't have a big problem, to feel necessarily that you have an avenue for a little bit of that. And these surveys provide that, if you choose to participate with you, if you're a parent. 20% sounds good to me. Ideally, we'd love more of that.
So you will circle back with us at some point about this?
No, this is, this is the work. I mean, I believe that you have a policy called parent involvement. And this is, this is not just a, for monitoring boards, it's guiding our work, strategic, in our strategic plan, there's a piece on parent engagement. We're serious about it and, you know, we'll put some actionable steps behind it.
See this break down building by the way?
Yeah, I've just, I mean, I've just started talking about it with principals. I'm not sure. We don't have many board meetings left. It might be something we could do in a retreat or. Again, it's not too different than what you, you know, it's not, it doesn't jump at you, you know, wow.
Right, right.
You know, the few things I highlighted look, are about right. That's pretty much what it is.
Speaking of engagement, making sure we get everybody to talk about mine, I'm just like, I'm curious, what, you have a question about the data?
Oh, I just, I, because I can't see it and I have not seen it, I wondered what the curriculum question was. Because Mark said that parents, was, was the question, do you understand the KEA curriculum? Or do you understand your child's grade level curriculum or have you asked? Because you know, I mean, like, I would think it would be hard for a kindergarten teacher to, parent to understand.
So the question was, I have a clear understanding of curriculum standards. That was the question.
Yeah, okay. I actually read that as I was answering it as a parent. And he answered it in all of my knowledge from every place I sit as a parent, where he has. And I kind of felt a little, as though that was an area that we shared responsibility with, a little bit of help. I mean, certainly that's in administration role, but as we brought, we collectively brought in a gentleman from the department, maybe agency, whatever they're called, to share with us insight on Common Core and standardized testing. I can't help but read these things with both hats. I answer them as honestly as I can as a parent. But that was one that I am not surprised came back with people not fully understanding. Because I was trying to think if I did not have the knowledge I have from the things I've done here, would I really understand the question?
I saw that as an opportunity.
Like a definition issue almost.
Yeah, I mean, but I also saw that as an opportunity for us as a board. I mean, out of all the questions, we obviously don't want to get involved in some of the means issues, although we're interested and concerned. But the curriculum one was one where I was thinking, can we partner in some way to help raise either a level of awareness or conversations around curriculum?
Well, you have, if you look at my interpretation, it does include school board policies, school procedures, the mission, the goals of the district. So I think there is an intercept there.
Right.
But it is, it really is about making sure that what's expected. And so curriculum is what, is the concept in terms of what you teach. Now, we know the curriculum includes assessment, includes instruction, but it really was, again, this is a very general and what it's up to us now is, well, it was a low response, so what does that mean to parents? And I think through those conversations, not another survey gets at what is it we need to do a better job.
Wait, a survey raises some flag.
That's what, that's what this is.
So you've identified with those flags.
That's an area where maybe people don't really understand.
They may not.
What, even definition-wise, what that really means. They may know what their teacher's teaching, but do they understand the broader issue of curriculum? Do they even understand what that encompasses? And so that's where I thought was that there might be some shared work that can happen around educating our community that is an outreach opportunity for us as board members as well. So, I thought I took that as shared responsibility.
So, I'm just a little looking at the clock. I want to make sure we stay on track.
Yeah, I do, I do. Because we had gotten to asking questions about the bullets until we got to four, and then we stopped asking questions about the bullets. So, Mark, I was wondering where our harassment and bullying policies are in that list of policies that relate to treatment of students. And it's not in treatment of students. Where were they though?
Probably should be there, under, under the mandated policies that I stated. I think it's probably mentioned somewhere else.
I didn't see it anywhere. I wasn't looking for it.
Right, because that's where I wasn't in compliance last year, and I added it.
I didn't see that section. I remember last year, and I didn't, I was reading for it and read, reading carefully about it. I didn't see it anywhere, and I'm concerned that in its absence, it's not being handled anywhere. And that we have not had reporting in a year regarding instances of harassment and bullying.
Well, I believe it was in last year's monitor report, but I can check that. But it does belong in, it wouldn't be in this report, right, the data, the incidents data.
I think we did have it here last year, because we didn't have a bullying policy.
Yeah, I think it was in this report, mention of it, but there were no data in this report that shows us.
Where would we have it?
I think it would be, I think it should be here, and I don't know why it's not. Because it is, it is a mandated policy that speaks to making sure there's a clear understanding of what the circus is. So, that it should be here.
And so, would it not just be listed, but also, there would be some data to support it as well?
Yeah, I think, I think that that, Ellen helped me here on 1.20, 1.40, did I not? Put some SEER data in that report last year in terms of incidents of bullying and harassment.
I think you probably did.
It's the state report that principals send. And so, in your September ends report, I believe that it was living there in terms of kids' relationship ends policies, not this policy per se.
It should, it should live here, and maybe in addition, if you feel necessary, in that 1.1. But I think, yeah, I mean, I remember the data you're talking about. I remember seeing it and talking over, but I think it is...
Yeah, I think we'd, where it would belong.
Well, if you think about it, it's about the, how many kids are being reported for bullying? The assumption you're making is that because we're not clear about the procedures and policies, right? We might be really clear about the procedures and policies, we might not be executing them right. Because this policy is about making sure they're clearly understood.
Right.
So, I get, you know, so where does, where do those data live?
Clear understanding of what may be expected and what may not be expected from the services offered. If all the rest of the policies live here, I can't understand how bullying and harassment would live here.
I think it should be mentioned on the list. I just don't know if the data belongs there.
Where's the data? That needs to be reported, and I'm not sure if, if it belongs on the list here. Where do we, when and where, and on what schedule, do we look data on those?
I'll check the ends policy.
And maybe even like affirmation of classified guidelines, or I get, I mean, I'm wondering, I guess, as we look at the rest of these, when are we getting affirmation that we're in compliance on the others?
Right, because this isn't necessarily asking if we're in compliance with these. It's asking if they're available and accessible.
Clearly stated and clear.
So, it's not addressing whether or not we're in compliance with any of these.
Yeah, so...
So, there's no evidence for, for any of these.
Yeah, and, and that's fine. My question remains though, if not under treatment of students, where would harassment and bullying be recorded in terms of data?
I'm quite certain, but I'm going to check tomorrow, that it's in the monitoring report from last September. And then, there's a, there's a, I think it's called SEERS. It's the data we send to the state on frequency of maladaptive behavior in the schoolhouse, including bullying and harassment.
I remember seeing a report.
And I think, I think I tied it to ends policies, 1.20 and 1.40. What else?
Well, it would be in the Google site. You have, where all the policies, all our ends policies are up on the web.
Right.
Well, that'll take time tonight. I'll, I'll check that. I'm pretty sure that's where it is.
Yeah, if you could give us an update next meeting, that would be great.
I'm just wondering, I think for me to accept this monitoring report versus tabling it, I feel like I need to know that we're going to be reported on that data and that that amendment is added in this policy to add to other policies. Because harassment and bullying cannot be overlooked in terms of clarity for parents. I mean, I think they're probably a top, definitely a top five, if not a top three, on people's...
So, if you want to make a motion to table, then that would be...
That would be fine unless you guys tell me when we're going to come back to it, or how we're going to come back.
I think, I think a change of that, yeah, I think that, yeah, I think a change of that, it's a good thing. I would, I would, I would second your motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to table this, then, for that, at least inclusion of those policies. And then, if we don't figure out where we are reporting out on data regarding those, that it be brought back, which is data.
Right, so the question is, we want to see the bullying policy noted in the report.
And harassment, which is a policy.
And then, and then a question mark is, when and where do, does the board get that data reported to it? Is there a second, you second it?
I would, well, I do, I do also, the other thing I would like to see, and I don't know if this is, if we have this, under the accessibility piece, I would love to see something that says, "We are ADA compliant." And I don't doubt that we are, but having that evidence, I think, would be important.
Are you making that a requirement of the motion?
Do we, does that need to be lumped in together? Is that all we do?
Well, we're just being very specific about the harassment and bullying. So, is there a specific question about ADA compliance that you want addressed?
Yeah, I would like, I guess I would like to have that in the report also, but I wouldn't want to go so far as to say, well, we can't accept this report if we don't have that data. Because if we don't have that data, how do we get it eventually? Whereas the bullying data, I'm pretty sure we have. It's just we, it hasn't been given to us, and that, that makes it impossible.
Mark, could you just sort of mull the question over about how, how do we, how do you report to us about ADA compliance? And whether or not that's part of what we're looking at? Okay, great. So, there's a motion, there's a second, there's been some discussion, any other discussion?
I only have a comment for Mark on the survey.
Can we, David, is this, is this about the motion?
Yes.
Can we just, I want to, I want to get to your question. So, can I have a vote on the motion? All is in favor? I opposed. Motion carries. So, we're tabling the report with the specific questions to Mark. And now, David, your question.
My only comment, Mark, on your survey, you kept the one to four categories. I would ask you to put some thought into what you think there should be a fifth one to, I don't know, or something along that line. Because I'm not fairly convinced that our parents know how to answer all of the questions. And certainly, I don't know would be a honest answer.
I don't know was an answer for some of the questions. Not all, but some. So...
I only ask that you consider it can't be washed by the WaySARS. You consider it.
So, let's move on to the next monitoring report. And we'll come back to treatment of students' parents at our next meeting.
I think we've collected one, and we want to have it displayed, sir.
Yeah, it's up on the screen right now. If that's helpful.
Yeah, I've got a very chunky heading here. It's not correct. Go ahead.
So, 2.2, treatment of staff.
Yep. So, similar sort of strategy. I'll walk you through. Some of them are minor, some of them a little bit more substantive. Page one, inappropriate is, it's just put district across staff members. Again, this is just to back up. We're stuck in the treatment of paid voluntary staff. This is a finish on route to cause for law conditions that are unfair, undignified, or disorganized or unclear. So, very similar, Rachel, to what she was doing with students and parents and gardeners. Now, we're just putting the staff.
Putting staff, yeah, got it.
So, on page two, one, these evidences in addition to the above documents. On page one, regulations that govern typical staff, collective bargaining agreement, staff handbook with SubHub. Or also, I wanted to mention, SubHub is a system that we have for prospective substitute teachers that we used to have a substitute manual. We did away with that last year. SubHub's an electronic, sort of a, not a webinar, but you read a bunch of scenarios, take a test at the end. Now, you're better equipped to take on the rigor of the classroom as a substitute teacher. So, we're expecting that happens if they happen to come in with a background in training. And the other two documents, of course, is CBA, staff notebook, also guide us in our decision to clarify with staff. Superintendent monitors district procedures related to mandated policies in these areas. Again, that hopefully clear to staff when they come on. I felt, again, I felt they should live in this, this monitoring report, because these are, these are policies and procedures that we use frequently, especially with, with the folks. And obviously, each year, there's an orientation session for licensed staff that we put some real thinking into two years ago. And so, before they start working in their respective positions, they spend, I think it's two days that we have set aside. Ellen, for your staff, for staff orientation. We review a number of things, including the multi-year strategic plan, which I added, and technology use procedures. Also, support staff will provide a similar orientation to building level, which is overseen by the principal. It's an area that, that particular area is an area that I have to put more oversight into. If you recall, there was a training in March of 2013 on bullying harassment for support staff. And it was because we had a number of people who didn't have the right orientation, the proper orientation. They were coming in at different times of the year for hiring, so there needs to be tighter controls on the one that orientation is happening for people who are coming in at different times of the year in particular. Additional evidences, we had a bus driver training in responsive classrooms. Several sessions were done this year. We plan on continuing that for bus drivers next year. We established a PLC teacher leader group this year. There's teacher participation workshop sessions with district leadership team concerning improving student, student performance, which I felt was necessary to put in. And we also have teacher membership on all district curriculum committees. So, again, those are ways of keeping teachers involved with, you know, the initiatives that are happening in the district in a very, very direct way. On page three, mentioning, okay, let's have the Google, I have ten citizen Google surveys as we move to that environment. But we use these surveys on a regular basis to listen to feedback from staff and a variety of district leadership initiatives. And that's an important tool for us. Again, not always helpful for feedback we get from surveys, but again, a tool. I meet with student, the district union leadership on an as needed basis. It used to be monthly up until this year, and as we've, we find our procedures and our relationships have developed, you know, it's not as necessary to be monthly as it is when, when needed. It's definitely a little bit like changing the schedule. And you can see in, in yellow that we have, and as of this date, there has been one agreements that will settle in step two of the agreements process. And other than that, that was the only action that was required at this point in this year. The CBA collective bargaining agreements are really a important document. It's looked at pretty regularly to make sure that the rest of the teachers are in effect. Page four, I thought it was important to mention that Mary Merton, who's our payroll person, door is always open. She's a part-time employee, as most people know, but she is always available for staff. And there's a lot of walk-in business, like the central office, she's very good about. Because teachers and support staff are very busy, busy people. She pretty much opens her door when people have a ten minutes that they need to talk to her about something. So, that's just a tribute to her. Additionally, the superintendent invites the lead negotiator for the union to discuss language interpretation before we even has met. On two separate occasions this year, I had that agreement to do that, making sure that my assumptions are being checked with the union leadership before I make a call around language interpretation. I initiated the revamping of the support staff agency fee form, which was not adequate. Informing support staff to write some of the collective bargaining agreement as relates to agency fees. So, I took the initiative to, I've been working with two negotiators from the union, out of four that's more accessible and usable for prospective teachers. As you know, when you hire onto me as a support staff, you have to pay the agency fee or pay union dues. So, it's four activates that process more efficiently. Also, superintendent adjusted to sick leave bank guidelines to reflect recommended changes by the union executive. So, the point of that section is just to demonstrate that working in close partnership with the leadership of the association to make sure we've got consensus on some of these contract provisions. And then, on page five, as it relates to making sure we're not unprepared to deal with emergency situations. I think that we're following the event of December 14th of last winter in Newtown. And we've had key staff aware of, through memorandum and announcements in the paper, what we're doing to keep staffing involved and, or changes.
Questions or feedback from our?
Two items that come to mind. Teacher membership on all district curriculum committees under, I've got it on five of page two. How are those, I'm curious how those? Right in line above, it also teaches participation in workshop sessions with district leadership teams considering improving teacher performance. I'm curious, how, how are those committees put together? Who's on, what, what teachers are on those curriculum committees?
Not by name, but who's represented?
Yeah, I mean, how would it be, yeah, don't, don't tell me.
Don't worry, I would, I would.
How are those, how are those people chosen?
Well, let me talk, take one, and I'll defer to my colleague Ellen on the other. The teacher improvement one is, if you recall, I ran a workshop for leadership team, developing our skills as it relates to walk, classroom walkthroughs. Because it's a new, a new way of looking at how to give teachers feedback. I put an invitation out to the association to send as many teachers as he liked to the workshop. Four names came forward. I'm not sure who those lucky four were. But I can tell you those who stuck it out, I think benefited from the experience. So...
So, that was about, in essence, about...
Yeah, we're all about in, in getting people to be there. The challenge, Dan, is that we're a small team, and there's a lot of work to do. And when we look at the number of initiatives that we have to do that are mandated and those that we feel important based on revision, because there's just so many times you can go to the bench and ask for people to help out. So, you have to be clear about what our goals are. You have to be able to incentivize that somehow to get people through release time, through per diem rates in the summer. But even with all that said, it's still a challenge to have good representation from all schools, from all ways, from all disciplines. So, at this point, I'll just, maybe a couple of minutes of Ellen with your six years of history, you know, how you go, how you facilitate them.
I think that's seven years. They're all voluntary positions. You've met many of them, all the people who came out for science, whatnot, have come from the committees. There's representation as best we can from each of the buildings. We try to keep the numbers about, about a dozen or less so that otherwise, you get, the work doesn't get done.
Right.
So, we try to have great level of representation, and most committees, we don't. We actually have a lot of special educators who join our committees and a lot of Unified Art folks as well, too. So, you get a kind of a cross-section of folks. But right now, we have four highly active curriculum committees. Social Studies, Science, obviously, ELA for Common Core, and then Math for Common Core are engaged and working and have been going to regional sessions throughout. We also have our PLC teacher leader group that's in play. We have a technology advisory group. We've changed the name, but it's no longer alt, it's now tag. So, that's made up of, tries to be made up of representatives across disciplines as well as grade levels. So, we have parent educators, we have teachers, we have nurses, we have, because technology reaches into all of the areas. So, really, depending on what you want, when I put out messages to the curriculum groups, I'm probably reaching 70 to 80 people that are on groups. I'm probably reaching seventy to eighty people that are on groups.
If someone wants to be in a group, they can put...
They can, in the, yeah, in the Common Core, the next gen science, all of those groups and social studies, I asked for a commitment of three years for the last group because I didn't want to start the curriculum revision work and then have the groups sub out. So I needed people for time. Our math committee has been in play for actually quite a long time, four years now, because we brought in and did a lot of embedded professional development with Vermont Mathematics Institute. They came here for three years and did coursework with us. So I had eighteen people on the group at that particular time. That group's slightly smaller now, it's about twelve, because people didn't opt to stay in for the curriculum part of it. So I have a lot of broad-based depth of knowledge kind of training. So your curriculum groups serve different functions. They're the go-to people in the building, they're the ones who are having extra professional development, as well as putting their voice in the mix as to how we're creating our frameworks.
It's been exciting and partly...
And they're very enthusiastic.
Yeah, and partly it's due to, I think, a renewed interest and vision around, around working as a district. And that's certainly, there's a reason to want to come to the table because it's not about one grade level, it's about pre-K eight in the conversation, it's interdependent, you can't just focus on one grade or one content that's all connected. And I think with the advent of Common Core standards, it's certainly been a driver in terms of, you know, ratcheted up the urgency to want to make sure that we pay attention to that. But the other group, the other thing that happens is lots of meetings that happen in the building. There's committees in the building. And so we're doing district work, but for those people who may not be at a district level, it's not that they're not doing something at the building level. So there's a lot of work, we're not always, you know, it's not that people aren't interested as much as the...
And the curricular groups are seen as teacher leaders, they're, they're decision-makers. They are the ones that, it is the body of that group that makes the decisions around those curricular frameworks, it's not one person. So things go to the table and they talk about it. And so when the documents are done, that it will be their seal of approval that goes on it, not just me. So they are the decision-makers.
I have a, I have a question. Earlier this meeting, you talked about communication, about maintaining that sort of consistency of message across, also from the leadership team on down. This policy, does it directly address communication to staff? Because it's mostly about thou shalt not.
Yes.
But I wonder, just because I'm curious, do you issue a weekly, monthly memo to staff from you directly about some of those issues? In other words, what better way to sort of set the tone and make sure the message is at least out there, to hear it directly from you, even if it is a decision or a conversation that's happening at the leadership team level? Is that something you've considered or are doing, I just don't know?
We, no, the answer's no, not on a monthly level. Based on the matter at hand, I will send out a communicate, whether it be school safety or self-encouragement of learning, or my teacher evaluation process, that we're going to be ramping that up in that high committee. So it depends on what the issue at hand is. We've talked a lot this year about me needing to do more of that. Because as I said earlier, I think it gets lost in translation. And it's not malicious, it just gets lost in translation. And then that creates, that creates disequilibrium. So I think that I need to play a more active role, not wanting to usurp the building leadership role, but I do believe I've got to play a more active role. We've talked about a district newsletter that's been on sort of the drawing board for a couple of years now, with some change out of central office staff, it's something I'm going to bring back, revisiting that so that we can have, for the celebration of learning, it's all about learning, some sort of moniker that captures the work we're doing, but to be able to message that in a way that's forward-looking. I think that that's another real viable vehicle to get that out there. So rather than Mark's message, it's, you know, we can have teachers talk about who are on the science committee, what they're doing around next gen standards.
I started a blog that's been going on, and so some of that is happening, all the curriculum conversation, and that gets broadcast to the, to the staff with a link in it, whether they go to it or not, that's up to them. But, so I'm putting out video around the Common Core, kind of different resources and things along the way, and then also the work of the committees. And the committees and I have talked about that, how do we get that word out of what we're doing? Because some of what we do is sort of mundane. You know, it doesn't like move mountains in a certain, in one session. So it's trying to figure out how to keep a message out there that there's work going on.
Right, sounds kind of like a school board meeting.
Sure.
I guess I've seen an effective tool in some of the places where I've worked is just literally an email, you know, very, almost, almost personal email that goes out from, and maybe it, you know, is informed by, you know, people that report to you with some things that are happening in the district, but that can, it doesn't have to be a production, it can be something very straightforward and simple and effective. So I just... Any other questions?
I just have a question. Responsive classroom, and I think I understand that professional learning communities are happening throughout the district, is responsive classroom a model throughout our district? Is that a K eight model? Is that...
It's more of a K five model and developmental design, it's akin, which is more addressing EMS, middle-level students. And that's not throughout EMS, that's only fifty percent of the teachers at EMS are using that by design.
On purpose?
It's on purpose, but it's because not knowing how to take that next step, so it's getting them trained.
It's coursework?
It's coursework, it's a week away. There's a plan to address that.
It's intentional that there's some sort of K eight, I don't even know what responsive classroom falls under. I know I've had it in some of the classrooms in my facility, and I know what it feels like, I know what it means to the kids. I know it's called something, like that category.
We could look at one point two, you know, in terms of, you know, those avenues having some eyes, we want to still influence responsive classroom supports those through democratic principles.
And that's just a K five principle?
RC is just K five.
And it's sister, whatever it is.
Yeah, it's called developmental design.
And that's designed for middle schools?
Older kids.
Okay, and so as a district, that's a message that we use for, so do we, is it, is it in all the buildings in here?
When we hire people, they're RC-trained. And if not, they're trained, they're...
They're trained when they get there. And so that...
Most teachers are.
So it's fully in place in EES, FMS, and then in the middle school, the sister version, that DD, is partially implemented?
Fifty percent.
Okay, and so then is that a priority, that it become a hundred percent? If it's an important component of what we...
Because the data, which I'm going to go mine, suggests that those at the middle school, those teachers who have been trained and are committed to developmental design, their kiddos visit with Mr. Briggs less often than classrooms that are not. So the data are pretty compelling that when you take the time, dedicate the time to build and foster those, that sense of democracy in your classroom, the kids have a voice and are part of, we have a problem, guys, how do we solve it as a team? There's more empowerment in kids, or less, are more likely to figure it out without interventions from people from downstairs. There's reasons to push for that agenda.
I encourage, as that comes to fruition, not just that building, but that families' education around that maybe is something that I sent out in the fall, because if you've experienced it, you know how powerful it is in your child's environment and the person, maybe someone that needs that. If you've never experienced it, you're wondering what the heck they're doing for the first six weeks of revision of homework. I say that sort of casually, but it is...
Oh, no, we get that, we get that part of all.
And, and it is so worth the time. So I think that's a parent education opportunity that would be awesome.
Well, it links back to the very vague question about curriculum. Because it is curriculum, it's not a hidden curriculum, it's right out there, part of, embedded in what we do. So, yeah, more sounds like information.
Sort of pervasive in all the content work that happens is this environment that's created by virtue of the philosophies we believe in here, and these are what they look like. So to the extent that you guys can make that succinct message that parents could understand what that means for their student, it is, like I said, in having witnessed it, it's really powerful, and you appreciate it because it had it, but if you haven't, you don't know what, what it is. And it could also be a nice statement of sort of our mission as this and our philosophy on what we do with our students is this.
I think it happens, not at a systems level, again, it's probably, some teachers probably take great effort in explaining that in the newsletter or face-to-face, others, it happens maybe more incidentally.
But if it's a systems priority, if it's like a K eight priority, what, no matter which version it's called, you put that message out to parents, sometimes you feel that they will come, like if there's resistance and they need to get through the rest of the training or whatever it is, there'll be an expectation of parents that that's part of what kids are, are living in their environment, and maybe that moves along the training process to get everything moving. I just, it's a pretty powerful message for you to say, this is our priority in the district, this is how the philosophy that we use and parents to understand it.
In my role versus...
Not just because the people don't listen to you.
My role versus principal's role, I mean, that's the, you know...
Yeah, but that's a, you're telling me it's a K eight priority. So if it's a K eight priority...
It's no different than science or mathematics.
Right, and so if it's not, I guess I would feel as though you should feel empowered to have that be something that people are held accountable to, because I think it's meaningful for families to understand that philosophy. And then the agency fee thing, I guess, just because I'm hearing about that at the state level right now...
That's kind of, I haven't seen a lot of buzz on that lately, I don't know if it's, it's happening? I didn't see that it was approved by, by Saturday, but I was...
I always advise to not come to fruition from what I've heard.
Find out tomorrow.
So let's, just a quick, very quick...
What is our, how do we do agency fee? Is everybody, as a condition of employment, we're hired?
Only for support staff.
Okay, and that's because there's any support set contract? And we administer that by having people sign off that they're going to, it'll come out of their payroll, they have to sign something?
Yeah, I mean, the form is much clearer now in terms of how that works. And you have two choices to become a member of the union or pay an agency fee, which is about eighty-five percent of the overall fee. And so you've got to make that decision when you're going to fire. And it comes out of, you're a payroll or you can pay the, you already pay the check.
And then I understood, the most recent version coming from our period would be that we would not be required to fire somebody if they chose not to participate, but they are, they're required to participate. I didn't understand or know how our process works in deducting anything from anybody's payroll and found myself somewhat confused. That seemed like a conflict, like you can't fire them and...
There'll need to be some guidance from the agency of education.
People need to authorize, yeah, I would, maybe that will come.
Yeah, we hope so.
And maybe we'll know more about whether or not it goes through, it was looking fairly likely the last one.
Well, it's not a comfortable conversation to have for teachers only, and it's really just sort of part of doing business, and whatever those like your views, what you do will, will act as one. We work collaboratively with the association and what's the best procedure. Because it is, you know, it's not comfortable.
Great, motion two.
I need to say one more question.
Okay, just, I want to let you know, we're going to go over.
Yeah, I know. I'm curious, top of page three, number two, discriminating against any staff member for no disruptive expression dissent. I guess my question is a little bit along the lines of, I don't know if this is the place to talk about this, but if it isn't, we can move on. Grievances, is there an anonymous grievance process? Is there a, let me see, ways, if, if staff members have an issue with, you know, we talked about it here, the one time that someone had to step in for, handle a situation between two teachers. What if there's a just agreement from teacher to principal, principal to administration, teacher to administration at a hierarchical different level? Is there an anonymous grievance process at all for something like that? Is that...
No, it's not anonymous. It's if there, if a principal took action that was outside of what their purview was based on the collective bargaining, the teacher can file a grievance against, you know...
It's a process, it's a defined process.
It's in the, and there's steps to it, it's very well-defined, timelines and expectations, and it's not wishy-washy.
And there's a grievance officer at the teachers association? So who helps sort of shepherd grievances along the path?
And the goal is, a grievance process is an important process, because it brings parties together by, by, hey, here's the issue, how do we come to yes? And it's, we're successful when we don't march through the grievance process and we solve the problems early in the, in the steps in which we typically do. If executed well, it's a, it's a good and important process to both.
But your question is, can a principal file a grievance?
I, more...
No, they have no assets, they have no rights.
I'm done, you know?
Don't come see me, no.
It's, yeah, I guess I was just looking for a little more, so it's all within the, within the union.
Yeah, it's online, you can get a, it's all there for your review on page three.
Presumably, despite the fact that principals don't have a contract, I'm sure at some point, or a union...
They don't have an association.
And I know we've read the contract at some point, and not recently enough to remember that there is something in there that speaks to their opportunity to agree the disciplinary matter or whatever.
Yeah, they're protected under their contract. And in the Department of Labor, you know, they oversee, and they, if there are serious egregious steps taken by the superintendent against the principal, they've got rights under a state statute to be protected from that.
Great, so I would love to entertain motion on this.
Motion to accept, not every report. Two point two. I'd forgotten we've been at this a lot, no, continue.
So is there a second?
I second.
Any further discussion? All is in favor? Opposed, motion carries, motion and report accepted. Mark.
Thank you for your responsibility.
Can we open that up full screen now?
Yep, that's it. Yeah, to the right, that funny little four arrows going everywhere on the, yeah.
So it's late in the evening, so I'm going to march through this...
You have our full attention.
Different perspective.
I knew that, didn't you?
That's the back of my head. So one of the interesting phenomena that exists in education is that what remains constant are things like structures, schedules, time we are in school, and what is typically the variable is student work. And what I'm going to talk about tonight is what we're referring to at the state level as Vermont's world-class education agenda, that really is trying to flip that paradigm so that learning is always constant, and structures and schedules and resources are the things that always have to change. Because in order to meet the needs of students of the 21st century, we can't do school like we've always done school. So I want to run through a series of slides that were developed by a small group of superintendents who are advancing this notion that the, if we are serious about addressing the world-class education agenda by the State Board of Education, by the Vermont School Board Association, by the Vermont Superintendent Association, the Teachers Association, principals, that we have to think about doing school differently. So I want to spend a few minutes sort of setting the context, reminding us what that agenda looks like, and then end with a very important conversation that has begun over a year ago about if we really want to get to these outcomes for kids, what does the, how can the calendar be used as an asset rather than, you know, detractor from, from reaching that goal? I also want to just let the board know and the public who's here is that the jury is still out in terms of moving in this direction. As the superintendent of Essex Town, I am very much in favor of, of talking about the school calendar as, as an asset and not being always our nemesis in terms of trying to affect positive outcomes for kids. But there's a lot of work that has to happen to make sure that if we were as a region to move towards this type of calendar, that we better darn sure have a deep understanding of why we're doing it, why it's important, and what types of results we're looking for. Even though we, we have by statute, the superintendent, regional superintendents, we, we decide on the calendar. And what you do is, as a board, is more pro forma, you know, we, we submit the, our, our calendar to the commissioner, secretary of education by April first, and it's accepted. All we have to do by law is come up with one hundred and seventy-five common student days and five in-service days that are in common, and the rest is, you know, we just create that. But given what this looks like, I really believe, to be more prudent, I need to be engaging, as do other superintendents, stakeholder groups, parents, school boards, students, educators, but ultimately, just by statute, again, it rests with the regional...
But ultimately, just by statute again, it rests with the regional superintendents across the state to, to make these calendars happen, okay? So that's it, see, it's this little thing marks here. No, I, I think that Ellen is driving, right Ellen?
I can drive.
No, this doesn't, this is just, can you advance on the bottom, please?
I can, but I think your thing should work, yeah.
No, it's, I'm challenged by this little thing.
Do you have it turned on?
I don't have it plugged in, I just like the red dot.
Oh, sorry. You don't have it plugged in.
I was gonna say, maybe there's no battery, but apparently you're around.
So here's some context. Okay, so it's that little, there we go.
Excellent.
Excellent. All right, so Superintendent Association, two years ago, now created a, a vision statement. And this is a slide that came out of that vision statement. It's not gonna look unfamiliar to you. What was exciting for Ellen and I especially is that what this slide really demonstrates is, really is aligned with the thinking in Essex Town, the thinking in Essex Town for the last five years. In that you look at these, where these, these three very important domains of making sure we've got, that learning shouldn't just happen, it's gotta be by design, with the end in mind, what do I, we want our kids to know and be able to do? That's gotta be clearly articulated on plan. And we have that, the makings of that plan through us, are, are, starting with the Essex Design for Learning, and now moving up to a strategic plan here for Essex Town. It has to innovate, interface with learning proficiencies. What is it clearly, how do we clearly state what we want kids to know and be able to do, based on the design that's gonna get us there? Finally, what are the indicators? How do we measure whether or not the $20 million from investing is actually having the desired result? So that's not an unfamiliar concept to all of us here. But that's really, I guess, starting to set the context. Also from the VSA's work, from the left is sort of the old way of doing school and moving towards the new way of doing school in the, in the green. From just universal, public education, just universal access, if you want to come to school, you can, because it's there for you. And now we're being clear that it's about not only coming to school and expecting kids to be there, but that we're educating kids to a high, a high standard. We have standardized solutions, again, putting people through the, a very sort of agrarian way of looking at school to customize learning plans and processes. Limited choice of options in terms of a menu, college prep versus vocational ed, that type of way of thinking about education at the high school level, to many choices and pathways for kids to, to learn and to experience success. Educational progress is measured by seat time and credits. Again, the Carnegie units at the high school, how many hours of English, how many hours of PE, and yada, yada, yada. We don't have that so much here at the middle level. And towards progress measured by authentic learning using direct measures. So it's not about seat times as much, that is, you know, really clear proficiency standards that are identified and measured in more authentic ways. And then traditional annual school calendars and schedules, to where instruction is learned delivered anytime and anywhere. So again, big shift in our thinking. You know, we've talked a lot about this in terms of what are the indicators? The indicators have to be not about the satisfaction of staff, not about the satisfaction of parents, or not as the satisfaction of leaders, but our students' learning, and how do we know that? We need to focus our efforts on monitoring those data, making sure we've got a system that, that can analyze that on a regular basis. And it takes two things, it takes people, mainly teachers, who are the most important resource that kids have every day, to be able to analyze their skills and the impact they're having on students. And we, we do that through strong professional development. And we're also rethinking what supervision and evaluation looks like. So the teachers are getting feedback on a real-time basis in terms of their, their effect on, on student outcomes. And it also takes structures, and this is what we're gonna talk a little bit about tonight, that we have to be comfortable facing the brutal facts that the way we've done school today, the way we're doing it today is the way it's been done for years and years. And I would argue, and many people would, that we're not gonna get to where we need to be unless we sort of change that. So, how do we go about structuring opportunities for students to learn? Hey. Go ahead, you do it, Ellen. Now you've heard it all before.
Moving right along.
So, here are the points of agenda on the State Board of Education. These are big policy people that are talking about this. So this isn't, this isn't just Mark, or this isn't just Elaine from Chittit County thinking, and other superintendents. The State Board, the Vermont Superintendent Association, Vermont NEA, this is, this is the agenda. And it's not that all, it's not that provide, used to be the language was providing all kids with an excellent education. Now it's all kids will learn, no exceptions, no excuses. So it really is about every child. The agenda really looks at a new vision for teaching and learning, that we have to look at professional development. When, when we went to an algebra seminar meeting last Tuesday night, saw some people there that I knew. We have to think differently about how we teach algebra, for example. And because the way we taught, the way I learned algebra, which wasn't very effectively, can't be in place today in 2013. So, structures like teaching algebra have, we have to think differently about that, if we really want to affect change. Engaging and supporting families in, in their, in our community. So the policy governance model lends itself very nicely to engaging the owners. And it's not just parents, but it's our community, and making sure that they're engaged in a meaningful way of supporting the work we're doing, more than just passing budgets, which is a good step, a good first step. And of course, we've talked a lot over the last few years about making sure that we're, we're using technology in a way that's delivering the goods, in a way that's helping students learn effectively and efficiently. And then fifth is making sure we've got the governance structure at the, at the, at the state, regional, district, and schoolhouse level that's providing the right level of leadership. So assuring success, again, these are things that you're, you're familiar with. This notion of a personalized learning plan that within these classrooms at Founder's Memorial School, for example, of 20 to 22 children, it's not about homogeneity, it's about making sure that we're using a flexible way of thinking about student learning so that learning plans could be developed accordingly based on the learning style of the child. We need to really partner with higher ed, what's a K-16 model look like? We, you know, colleges and universities are somewhat insulated from the conversations that are happening in, in public schools. So we need to be darn sure, like we're clear about what eighth to ninth grade looks like. We have to be really clear about, for those students who want to be, who are college-ready, or want to go into, into, into the workforce, what's the partnership look like for those organizations that are receiving our students? And then finally, we have to provide students access to rigorous learning beyond the schoolhouse. So it's no longer, you know, tying the brick and mortar in a classroom for 45 minutes for language arts. We have to be thinking about, in addition to that learning that happens there, where are the opportunities outside of the school day? And outside of the schoolhouse that affect positive outcomes for kids? Sorry, I'm whipping through this, but try to be sensitive to your time. So that leads us into the school calendar conversation. And you'll see a copy of this in a second. So, the premise behind the shift, which I've mentioned already a little bit, is that it really, it focuses on student learning and achievement. It's not about when we're having vacations, you know, when is Martin Luther King Day? It's about, it really, the focus is, how do we affect student outcomes? And what's the best way to do that? Some of the data that we've seen suggests that the schedule you're gonna see tonight, if you haven't seen it already, may in fact limit the amount of regression that happens when kids say goodbye on the 14th of June and show up on the 28th of August. What this calendar, this draft calendar puts out is that school starts five days earlier and ends five days later in June, which allows for more extended learning time, still at 175 days, but it has more opportunity for contiguous learning rather than the fragmentation that sometimes happens with our current calendar. There are intercessions that you'll see. So the time that they're not in school, the notion is, there'll be learning opportunities for kids during that extended time away from the former schoolhouse. And I'll talk about that in a minute. So it's just not more vacation away from school. How do we, we shift our resources so that there are learning opportunities during those intercession periods when they're not in school? What's Park and Rex's relationship, for instance, during the times that they may be home longer and not in the schoolhouse? What are those partnerships we can develop so that those learning opportunities will exist? Some of the data that we've seen from all the parts of the country in talking with parents and with, not me personally, but people who have visited other schools suggests that the climate is better. Because, because of the way the schedule works out, and there's more opportunity for contiguous learning, days, consecutive days, and there's a longer break, when kids come back, when teachers come back, kids are really ready to learn. There's not that start-stop feel as much as it is now when, because of the long summer break. We also have opportunity for better, embedded professional development. Right now, we might have a Monday and a Tuesday off, and so we have partial weeks, because teachers are outlearned. But with the schedule you see tonight, the professional development can happen during those intercession times when kids are not in school anyway. So it's not, it's not a fragmented weekend learning. Not, what's more is that allows us to work collaboratively with our regional districts, because we would all have the same calendar. And finally, it's responsive to the diverse demographics of students. Then we think with the intercessions available, it would be more apt to meet the needs of the varying degrees of need that we have among the student groups. Yep. The intercession, again, these are just a quick brainstorm that we did for students. Opportunity for applied learning in real situations, reteaching intervention for kids who are more tangled up in their learning, and they need just that much more support, those, those intercessions could provide that. Individualized enrichment choices, opportunities to collaborate outside of the, again, typical school day with University of Vermont, with IBM, with experts, some not unlike what we've done here for in the town, but again, during more, more extended periods of time. A more evenly distributed pace of education, again, it's not start and stop, start and stop, it's more consecutive days. And a time for teachers to create and collaborate, reflect on their work, and be more involved with kids outside in the classroom experience. For teachers, that's a really bad picture. We like to refer this to as Pink in the Rink. This is when the expert, nationally acclaimed expert Dana Pink, and I've never attended that session.
You didn't?
No, I, over a thousand educators from Chittit County. But anyway, it allows teachers to, to work more closely with each other in Chittit County. Because it is, Chittit County is the only superintendent school that's advanced in this idea. Allows us to look at those data I talked about earlier in terms of thinking about how we approach teaching differently. Allows us to develop those individual learning plans, creating those partnerships during off-school time. And again, the collaboration and preparation, anecdotally, based on the research we've seen, is, is a lot, is stronger. And based on what's in town and the things that we're dealing with, Sback, of course, is the smarter balance assessment portion, consortium versus new statewide assessment, allows us possibly more time to be more aware of those issues. You like that picture?
Friendly family.
So again, in, in thinking about this, the family piece, which is big for us, big for me in terms of making sure we have their understanding and commitment moving forward, is expanding students' interests and talents, opportunities to have during intercession, those opportunities for tutoring or remedial sessions, as well as for students who are more highly able, you know, more enrichment opportunities. You know, let's face it, that, you know, a lot of kids are ready to come back to school. It may minimize the boredom that sometimes occurs in the summer. Broadens opportunities for family because of the extended family time, and potentially can offer more balance because it's school year, it is more balanced with the calendar itself. So, let me pause here and then just see if you have any questions so far, then I'll open up the calendar. Again, this is just by way of introduction.
You said that some of the stuff that you mentioned is anecdotal. Are there areas of the country or places doing this, that the data is not in that we have information?
We do, I don't have it, it's something I need to have.
But it exists, and it's the basis of the thought process to move in such a, I guess, different, if you will, direction.
That's correct.
So it's not anecdotal, but there's foundation in this.
Student performance data, yeah, climate data, those types of things, yeah.
It exists. What areas of the country are doing it, do we know that?
The, the data that came to us was from the Southwest. You know, Arizona in particular, so. But again, those, I'm meeting with a group in two weeks to look more at that. Because I, I do believe you can look at good researcher people, and also throw research at you that shows it, it doesn't work. So I think we just have to be thoughtful in terms of what we feel we want in this region, and potentially could a calendar like this affect the learning that we're, we're hoping for? There's a lot of assumptions built into this presentation, and the notion that in fact it's gonna affect student learning. One of the things that I think about a lot, and we've talked about as a leadership team, is we're already in school for 178 days, but when you look at a student's life in the building, they're not learning, they're not involved in curriculum for 178 days, six and a half hours a day. There's a, when it's all sugared off, it's really about 65% of that, is really the actual learning. So, what's happening when kids are in the classroom? How are we using the time that's given to us in our teaching? And we see varying degrees of the use of time in Essex Town, in terms of what teachers are doing. So I would argue, in addition to looking at calendars, we're also needing to think about when kids are in receipt, what are we doing with them? That's the other piece of this.
I mean, when I, when this first came across my radar, my initial thought was, it was just sort of moving the deck chairs, you know? I didn't have all the context of the intercess, the ideas about intercession and other technologies. That's where the rubber, in my opinion, meets the road.
Yes, it does.
Otherwise, you're just kind of moving dates around, and you're starting sooner and you're ending later. But you still have the same number of days.
Although, when you look at the, when we put the calendar up, Ellen, Rachel, do you have a?
Well, it just, it just, I'm looking to you, so you still have that, that summer month, and if there are kids that you're concerned about, are there still gonna be additional things in place for them? Because I think there's, there's still an opportunity there.
Yes, yeah.
For large group.
Yeah, so I think what you're saying is, in addition to possibly intercession, that during the, the normal summer weeks, will there be other opportunities for kids who need that support? I would say we would have to consider that.
And then the other thing is, is this conversation also along with employers in the area, those sorts of things. So I'm just thinking, is some of our big employers, and the vacation schedule's different, that may impact some of those.
All of that, all of that, yeah. I mean, if we're really serious, we are serious about what those partnerships looks like, then that work starts now. The, you can see up here that this was the, this is proposed, that this gets launched, not this year, but the following year. And so there's a lot of work that has to go in to getting ready for that. And that may be too ambitious of a date, but again, that was sort of a place to begin the conversation. So I apologize for the poor quality, but you can see that this date here is the 20th of August. So you can see it's, this is when we usually start, the 27th. So we, we would start a week ahead of time. We also don't, that's the first student day, so the question is, well, we usually have a couple, three, maybe sometimes four days with teachers. When do we start doing, do we still have that three or four day beginning of the year without kids here? That puts us back into, you know, this week in August. And you can say, see on the flip side, that we usually get out around here, is that the 12th? And now it pushes it, that's 175, and we have 178. So we would be going, you know, in here somewhere.
Plus no days.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So the first thing, you don't have, I think on this site, I can give you, I can, I can link you to this. It also, there sits over here, this, what we have for our calendar today. This is a tough period of time, currently it's 13 weeks with kids, because we go all the way to here right now. So the first idea would be Labor Day off, but that rather going 13 weeks, which is a really long stretch of time for kids, there'd be a week, which right now is, you know, we have a parent conference next day, next year here. So possibly, you know, could we build in conference days, you know, could we use this week differently? But what it does is it breaks up this long, long period of time.
You know, since you get two fall breaks then, October and Thanksgiving.
Like December, it's a typical, you know, it's a little bit longer than we typically have. It goes into, you know, that first week of January, and then we have Martin Luther King. And again, there's no other breaks in here, you go right to the February break, but we add, there's a week added in March. And then another stretch long of learning in April, again, longer than usual. And then we, again, it's about six to seven weeks on, and 10 days to two weeks off. But we don't have the fragmentation, there aren't, there are no, not the breaks, it's again, the consecutive days of learning.
I see, I corrected, the February break and spring break are two weeks long.
Yep.
Is it hard to see, because it breaks it up?
A lot of schools have this, in Vermont, because of town meeting, have this week and then these two days. We don't, because we have Australian ballot, and they, they need our schools. So for a lot of schools, it's just adding three, for us, it would be adding five days in March.
So the spring session has two, two-week breaks?
I, I am, the intercession piece, I don't know how to do that. And it, it needs to be studied. We are doing some things like that, for instance, we have a music educator. For instance, we have a music educator at, at EMS who starts his day a little bit later in the morning, because he teaches a little bit longer in the day. That's, that's good thinking. But we don't want to do it on the benevolence of teachers, you know, we have to do it really strategically. So, when we look at all the human resources, can we redeploy or re-shift those resources so that there's time, rather than in a school, typical school year, can there be some days during the intercession? That's the work that has to happen. And again, all of the other partnerships that really we're going to have to develop, that would have to start now.
And so, by that, you mean like, so certain students might be targeted to come in some of the times, or to do some things at home and relay back to teachers during those times? Or is it still all?
It's all, and we have to be strategic. We can't just say, we want to have an intercession with, with this group of students in October. Well, does that happen in April too? We've got to be really thoughtful in terms of when those things are provided and how decisions are made, or on who gets access to what. The other big thing is, it has to be, I think, done in collaboration with Chittenden Central.
Absolutely.
And I, I would, I would hope that we could have some conversations with their administrative team, and we've had some, but they've been very sort of informal, and with your sister board over there about, what do they think about this?
Has the, have other groups weighed in on this? Like, I'm thinking the Vermont NDA, have they weighed in on this proposal?
I, I think that they, not to a large, not to a public degree, I don't believe. I think that they are in support of going forward with the conversation, but there's a lot of assumptions built in.
Right.
How widespread is this across the state? Are we unique?
Yeah.
Right now, this is just Chittenden County?
We're unique.
This proposal was being discussed up in Franklin County a certain number of months ago.
Well, the superintendent up there has been advocating for this for seven years, so it's not a new idea. Some of us believe that I'd rather have it, I'd rather it just be a statewide teacher's, you know, a statewide calendar, not a teacher's contract, a statewide co, a teacher contract, not be that idea either, but a statewide calendar. So, it just, we're all doing it together. You know, there's some risk involved going it out on your own.
So right now, this is just sort of a Chittenden County?
Just Chittenden County, yeah. And, you know, think about sports schedules, think, you know, we, we, we're kind of, we're kind of special. We don't have a high school. So we're not beholden to tech centers and, you know, Division One playoffs and, you know, we, you know, I mean, it's, it would be a, it's a lot of work to take on, and I, I really want to pursue it, also carefully, very openly, about, about the steps along the way.
Because if, if you don't have a high school on that same schedule, I can see a lot of families, this wouldn't be very challenging.
Yeah.
I think it's a problem, I can see.
Not at the end of the night. I think so too.
All of it, yeah. So I know that I, and, and Mike Dewey's and Judy Novak are, and Ellen and others are principals, all very much in support of, this sounds exciting, let's go forward and start having conversations, let's look at the systems issues, and, and see what's plausible, and engage our community soon. But I think at the, at the leadership level, I would really hope that we can have those conversations with your, with your board colleagues at Chittenden Central to start the conversation. I, I think they've had a similar presentation from Mike, again, sort of just a general orientation.
Who's, who in our district has been in that conversation? Have any parents?
No, I'm, this is, again, I, I didn't want, I didn't want to come out and say, here's the calendar, I wanted to set the context.
Right, right, right.
Talk about getting people excited, I think they'd get excited if I just came out with a calendar. I just want the memo.
There is conversation.
How, by the way, your next year's calendar?
Yeah. No, I mean, I think this, this has sort of leaked out, I mean, people are talking about it, for sure, yeah.
I think there was an article about this in the Brown Conference a couple months ago.
So I've been wanting to bring it forward, it just, tonight seemed like the right time. I'm not, I'm excited about it, but it's not, there's many things that we're doing. And I felt in order to really, to do this justice, I've got to dedicate the time, because it's, to do it well, you've got to really put effort into it. And that's the case of time on your part, and, you know, I would, obviously, we need to be, have a consensus of this is the direction. I don't know what happens if one district or two districts say, we don't want to play. We're, we're talking about supervisor reunions, Chittenden East has six elementary schools. You know, getting everyone in agreement, you know, might, that, that might, this might be ambitious.
So, Mark, what would you think would be the next step for us as a board? With, what, what would you like us to do with this information?
I, I would, it would be great if you can reach out to Jack Bellinor and say, you know, Mark gave us a general sort of 2.0 shot at this, and is there an interest in having a conversation? And I, and I've been doing that with Mike and Judy to a degree, but we've got to ratchet that conversation up.
Happy to do that.
Good first step.
Okay.
Because I do believe, I think I hear you, that we, we should do this together.
Yeah.
To have your, to have two separate schedules might be.
Although, oh god, that would just.
And then you also got to think into busing and all those other issues that would come if, I mean, not just family schedules, but your busing, you have multiple things, you have rec department programs, which rely on high schools to, you know, there's, there's a multitude of problems if you don't go, if you don't, that I think would be harder to overcome than.
I think the first step is to, is to get our arms around, is, is, this is a good idea, it's just something, because if we don't have the arms around the importance of this in terms of really looking at structures and time and schedules differently, then these ends policies are going to be continuing to be a challenge. So if we can agree that, and just we'll think about that, and we'll come back and talk about it, but if there's resistance to the notion of, you know, really trying to look differently at our structures and timing especially, then, you know, the pragmatics of transportation schedules and, I mean, that, to me, that's a secondary issue.
Well, in the, I'm just thinking, who else has got a stake in this? It's all the people in the summer camps. The Edge, Parks and Rec, all the little places. You'll say, wow, Smud's all of a sudden has this great opportunity to do camps, because they have all this time in, you know, in the winter, and we lose some in the summer, so that's going to be.
Yeah, because we lose, you know, we lose time.
Right.
And we don't lose time.
It's shifted.
It's shifted, yeah.
So now we have some, now we have some winter camp, not just summer camp.
That's right.
But not, so I mean, there's going to be a lot of people who have huge.
Yeah, you're absolutely right, Dan.
But it would be great to have some of the data to show, like, what, what are some of the benefits? Because I think if we're going to have the conversation, if we can, if we have some data to support the idea, I think that's going to make first round argument regarding this, of which, what the consensus is.
Is there, did I see behind the scenes a website that is publicly accessible that we could check out, that has more information about the idea?
I will forward you this blog, which has, we put some FAQs up there, and I've addressed many of them tonight. But I'll send you this, we created this, actually Cindy Remy with her help. Give Cindy credit, there she is.
Can I put this in a minute?
Sure.
Or do you not want people?
Yeah.
So, schoolcalendar2.blogspot.com.
Yeah. I'll make a note, send it to you tomorrow.
Thanks.
But yeah, I think it's important that you get your arms around it, and then when you're approached about it, my message to the leadership team is that.
School calendar.
That we're very interested in having the conversation, and when someone says, what do you think? You say, I'm interested in the conversation, we're exploring that in terms of it's, it's fit for us in Essex Town, and I mean, that's, that's the truth.
Well, and I think, more specifically, at this point, I wouldn't feel comfortable saying anything other than, we've asked for more data to understand why this would be beneficial, and where else it's happening, and how that has produced outcomes for kids. So I, I would be able to say that I was informed of it, I know the intention of it, and that we get to hear the data surrounding the suggestion of a, of this magnitude. Because I couldn't imagine that there'd be any next step in this conversation, at least for the way I process to understand.
What's the foundation?
What's the foundation of this? So.
Well, I think that the context is, we believe that, again, where I started, is that the way we conduct ourselves in school, it needs to change in, in a calendar, when you look at.
But what we believe, and what we have data to support, are, we can talk what we believe to lose.
Yeah.
And my data supports it, we can't get people to embrace something so dramatic. And to the extent that it be districts that have shown improvement in outcomes in like environments, or high-quality schools, like in Kentucky's pretty high, Massachusetts is pretty high, were pretty high. And so I think, picking a district or a, or a state or a county that was struggling first, and has now improved, not to suggest, obviously, we're looking for good to great here, the argument becomes that much more confined if this is being, happening, improving success in already good quality areas. Because that's going to be the argument. We're already good, why would we mess that much with things? And I'm not suggesting that I don't support, that I understand the concept very thoroughly.
But it just, when you think about, and again, this is very Mark, this is opinion, okay, all it is is opinion. But when we have a three-day school week, Wednesday is a Friday, and so now it's really just Monday and Tuesday, and then they're gone. So when you have the continual days, just those broken school weeks alone is the reason to be, you know, in support of this concept, because you don't have that fragmentation anymore.
And that's where the 65% is what you're talking about? Because I, I wrote myself a question, that what we have really amounts to more like 65% of the days that we have because of, and that's why.
And it's because of all the things that we do outside of transitioning from class to class, lunch, and, I'm talking about in the classroom, it's really comes down to.
Like, what it amounts to instructional opportunity is 65% of the time? And is there like an analysis of how that number changes in a continuum-type calendar that looks like that? So I guess, I mean, that's the type of data that would be really beneficial to help explain the notion of that type of.
My plan, I'm looking at that.
Yeah, so that'd be great, between now and the next meeting, if you can provide us with some links to some supporting documentation around this idea, that would be a help for some of us. And I would encourage everybody to go to this website, to make yourself as familiar as you can with the concepts, because I think we will pick up this conversation as a board.
Oh, it'll come soon.
And then talk about, you know, reaching out to other boards and other groups as well, so.
Using that calendar as an example, would that eliminate calling teachers out of the classroom, hiring substitutes to do curriculum work, for example?
It would be done.
That's part of the reasoning.
That's part of the reason, yeah. Not the sole reason, but yeah, we would have to do that.
You can use the intercession times.
Now, you'd see significant improvement perhaps, right there.
Yeah, it's continuous learning, yeah.
Would the calendar, when we look at it, straight up or medium here, show us which parts of those breaks are teacher time? Like, I understood those dark parts to be student having a building time. Does it indicate which parts of those are like full break, or teachers here, like?
It just shows the time that students are learning in the classroom, and the tent, versus our educators have 10 days above and beyond student days, so we have, doesn't reflect where those 10 days would fit.
So some portion of those are in-service, the kind of days?
During the intercession times.
During the intercession times.
Yeah, that, that are blacked out.
But otherwise, they might be teacher vacation time.
Yeah.
Okay. I was just.
Again, it's, Dan used the word shift, it is, it's the same amount of time, it's just being allocated differently, that's really the concept.
Great, thank you for this presentation, very interesting, more to come on this topic. But I just want to, it's 9:30, so it's almost 9:30, so I just want to make sure that we are cognizant of that they were over. And I was teased into this meeting, thinking that we were going to end early. So.
And the other thing, I'm sure when we bring this back, it'll be, and not, I, I know you were not deliberate to not have it on the agenda, but it might be the type of thing.
No, it was on the agenda.
They would generate attendance.
It was on the agenda.
Was it on the one that got posted?
You didn't get sent the right agenda.
Oh, no, 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 I mean, but is it the one that got mourned? Included it?
No.
I'm just thinking, this is a topical issue.
Exactly, that's why I put it on there, yeah.
People might, so.
People might come out with this.
So, yeah, so I think, the next time it hits, obviously, certainly intended for it to.
It was, it was on the agenda.
I completely understand that. But that being said, you know, it'll strike me just what it is.
Good thing we have R E T at, by golly.
That's it.
So, there is an executive session scheduled, do we need that executive session?
That can be very, very brief, I promise, five minutes.
Okay, so before we go into executive session, I just want to remind folks that our next meeting is June 3rd.
We put it for the 10th, because I'm not going to have all financials done until the 3rd. I don't know how it landed on the 3rd. Do you?
Do we have, do we have 3rd and 10th?
No, it's just the 3rd.
Second and 4th.
It's the 7th and 4th, but June 3rd's the 1st.
For some reason, I have my calendar, that we're, meetings on June 3rd and June 10th, so I'm, forget what I just said. Tell me when the meeting is.
Well, it's usually the 2nd and 4th Mondays of the month, right? So, June?
So I was hoping you'd do the 10th, which is the 2nd Monday.
So, yeah, the 10th is the, I'm not sure why this was here, so, 10th, good, early?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Ellen, thanks for.